Welcome, everyone. It is 7:03 PM, and I call the Carver School Committee Meeting of October 2, 2023, to order. If everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one school committee member who is participating remotely, so all of our votes will be a roll call, which means we'll all say our name and cast our votes individually, just so everyone is aware.
One second. And then, just always as a reminder, this meeting is being held in person in Carver Town Hall Meeting Room 1. It's also being held virtually in accordance with the government Massachusetts March 12, 2020 Order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. It can also be seen live on Area 58. So there's three ways to access tonight's meeting. And we're excited to start the evening with two recognitions, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
So first, we'd like to invite up Brandon Genie. So Brandon, if you could come up just to the table, that would be great. Yeah, take a seat.
Have a seat.
So we have Brandon here this evening because we want to recognize him because he was recognized for, with the National Hispanic Recognition Award by the College Board. Brandon was selected to the award through the College Board National Recognition Programs. These programs celebrate students' hard work in high school and showcase their strong academic performance. The program awards academic honors for rural area, Black, Indigenous, and Hispanic students. The award is an opportunity for students to share their strong academic achievements with colleges and scholarship programs, as they're always seeking to recruit diverse talents. We're proud of Brandon's strong academic performance, specifically in his PSATs, SATs, and his grade point average. To be eligible for the award, the criteria is that a student must have a GPA above 3.5 or higher, PSAT or SAT scores that were within the top 10% of all assessment takers in their state, and/or earned a 3 or higher on two AP exams as ninth and 10th graders. Brandon was recognized based upon his GPA at the Carver Public Schools, which is a 4.617, and also having both PSATs and SAT scores that were in the top 10% of all students in Massachusetts. His total SAT score was a 1390, and his total PSAT score was a 1280. So this is a straight recognition based upon Brandon's academic performance. So we're excited tonight to present him with recognition. He also receives a recognition from the College Board, and I'm sure we'll recognize it again probably as we get later into the year of convocation. So Brandon, we're happy to have you here tonight to present you with this award. I don't know if you have any, you don't have to say anything. I brought you up to the table. You can just smile and wave to the crowd if you'd like. That's how you'd like to do it? Well, Brandon, congratulations on your outstanding academic performance. Brandon, well, you may not want to see this, but historically, we'll do a picture. Can I do a picture of the school page?
You don't have to, Brandon.
Sure, you don't have to. Your father and dad want you to.
That's right.
Are you trying to try the picture? I'm okay.
Thank you.
Sam, the school needs one, too.
Thank you.
Our second recognition this evening is we'd like to introduce the members of the newly-formed Student Advisory Council to the school committee. So we have several of the members here. First, we're excited to have Corinne Clary, who's joining us up at the table. So Corinne is going to be our student representative, who's going to serve as a member of the school committee throughout the entire school year. So we're really looking forward to that, excited about it. The other members of the Student Advisory Council who are here, if they could come up to the table, that'd be great, Sarah Stares, Courtney Carpenter, Haley Scott, and Shatavia Leonard. So we just probably need one more chair, Shatavia. There we go. No, you need a chair, Shatavia. Of course you do. So I'll just give a little background about the selection, the process that the students went through. And we had our first meeting actually last Wednesday. Our next meeting is coming up on November 6. So I met with actually students in the sophomore, juniors, and senior classes, and talked to them about one of our goals this year as a school and as a community is to get more student voice, to have more students actively involved in decisions that are made throughout the school district, both at the middle high school and district-wide. And we said to the students, if you're interested in having a voice and sharing with the school committee your concerns and the things you're excited about that are happening in the Carver Public Schools, we want you to take the opportunity to do that. And we asked for students to volunteer, to step up, and put themselves out there to be part of the Student Advisory Committee. And this is an outstanding group that we have. We're excited about being able to work with Sarah, and Haley, and Shatavia, and Corinne. Corinne decided, she said she wanted to take the bold step of being the active voice of the Student Advisory Council at the school committee meetings. And so Corinne put herself forward for that, and the group accepted her as being the person who's going to be in that position and put her in there. So we're excited about that. And ultimately, the group will be, at times, will be asking to get feedback from the school council, from other students in the school, as issues go up before the school committee. When we met the other evening, we actually looked at tonight's agenda, and we talked about some of the things that were on this evening's agenda. And then we just got a general sense of things that they thought were going well or might need some change in the school. So we're excited about having this Student Advisory Council that's going to be meeting regularly with two members of the school committee, Colleen Zanuski and Katie Sullivan. And then, obviously, we're excited to have Corinne with us here for all of our meetings. So we just wanted to take a minute to introduce three members to the school committee. I said to them that they don't have to say anything right now, but if they want to say anything, they have the opportunity to say. So I don't know if anybody has a couple of words, if I'd say. No pressure. You can just say, "Thank you."
I did this last year, too, so I'm just happy to be back doing it again.
Thank you, Sarah.
This is my first year doing it. I'm just excited to be a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Haley.
So piggyback off of him. Also, my first year doing it, so.
Well, we're happy that you're stepping up and taking a leadership role within the school, and we're excited to be working with you. I don't know if any of the members of the committee have any other thoughts at this time?
This is my favorite part. One of my favorite parts of being on the school committee is getting to be a part of the Student Advisory Committee, because obviously, my passion lies with the students. So I'm really looking forward to what we accomplish this year.
And I'm excited to, you know, get a feel of what's going on in the middle high school because I feel a little disconnected because, you know, my daughter's in elementary school. So it'll be nice to see what's going on and see what kind of community involvement we can do and just keep going, addressing any concerns you might have. So look forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm also looking forward to student voice. We're here to represent you, so we're here to, you know, work to make sure that you have the best educational extracurricular experience that you can. So having your voice is really important to all of us. So thank you for stepping up, and I look forward to hearing from you all.
And one other thing is that, so starting at our next meeting on October 23, we're going to add an agenda item, which is going to be a Student Advisory Council update that Corinne will provide on a regular basis at our meetings.
Excellent. Great. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Haley, Shatavia, Shatavia, thank you for being here this evening. And congratulations. We can applaud thanks, yes.
Okay, so next, that brings us to comments from the EAPC. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to express support of school committee's resolution on the Thrive Act, which is to remove the MCAS as a graduate requirement. Also here tonight is none other than former elementary school teacher, EAPC Executive Board Member, inactive MTA Retiree Deb DiSvaldo. So I'm going to ask Deb to join me and us in solidarity to also say some words with us. So come on up, Deb.
Welcome.
I'm just happy not to be limited by three minutes on public comment. Good evening, members of the Carver School Committee and families, and so many of my past students. It's wonderful to see them active, stepping up and stepping out. It's a real blessing to me personally to see them. As Tom said, I'm Debbie DiSvaldo, and I'm a retired elementary school teacher. And I am a very active lifetime member of the Massachusetts Teachers Association and the National Education Association, and very, very proud of those affiliations. And most of all, I stand in strong support with the educators of the Education Association of Plymouth and Carver, and especially those in Carver. They have a leg up on everyone else. Sorry, Tom, but they do. Like most educators, I'm glad to see that the committee is going to be taking up a resolution in support of the Thrive Act on this evening's agenda. It is past time to end the 30-year-long failed experiment in Massachusetts of test, punish, and privatize, and put students, communities, and real teaching and learning at the forefront. Carver's students deserve it. High-stakes MCAS testing and the so-called accountability measures that go along with the punitive testing have undermined our public education system in Carver and across the Commonwealth for three decades too long. Massachusetts is one of only eight states in the United States that hasn't abolished tying standardized testing to graduation, even though these exams don't actually increase academic achievement. Following in the lead of states such as Florida, who do tie them to testing, doesn't seem to me like what we should be doing when it comes to the education of our students. The test-and-punish MCAS regime is particularly harmful, too. Students who are on IEPs, students who are learning English, students of color, students who are economically disadvantaged, and students from other groups that have been historically marginalized from both inequitable and supportive education. Passage of the Thrive Act would address the issues of the current punitive MCAS regime by, first, replacing the MCAS graduation requirement with one that allows districts to certify that students have satisfactorily completed coursework showing mastery of the skills, competencies, and knowledge required by the state's standards. They would also eliminate state receiverships, which have stripped a small handful of communities of color of the democratic processes that every other community in Massachusetts enjoys, all while watching the state receivers drive those districts into the ground. And by establishing a commission to create a new, whole-student system of assessing schools. Passing the Thrive Act would mean school and district evaluation would focus on supporting locally-led school improvement plans while still aligning with federal law. Student learning and assessment would be reoriented in a developmentally appropriate and educationally sound way that educates and supports the whole child. The experiment of test, punish, and privatize that was put in place decades ago has been failing our students and communities ever since. It would end. Please stand tonight, arm-in-arm with educators, families, and students, and vote to pass the proposed resolution to support the Thrive Act. Thank you for your time, attention, and affirmative votes. I appreciate you listening to me, and I look forward to hearing tonight how that vote went. I have left an important family event tonight to come speak to you, and I hope that that shows you how very important this is to me as a Carver resident, a resident of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and a person who is an educator for life. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to comments from the captains' council.
Yes, we're excited to have the captains' council back. We have four representatives this evening. From the girls' soccer team, we have Olivia Carrera, Grace Benavenu, and Sarah Stares. And from the boys' soccer team, we have Zach Todd. So welcome to everybody.
Welcome. Ah, you got the trick chair.
And if you just don't mind sliding the mic a little bit, just to make sure, because otherwise, we won't hear you at home or on Area 15.
So we're the captains of the girls' soccer team. I'm Sarah.
I'm Olivia.
I'm Grace.
And I'm the captain of the boys' soccer team, and my name is Zach.
So starting off with highlights from all the other teams, the golf team needs to win two of their next four matches in order to make it into states. The cheer team is very excited about having a larger team, and they're really looking forward to their competitions. And volleyball just had their recent win against Rising Tide. Their Dig Pink game is Thursday, and junior Amanda Byron is one away from hitting her 100 aces.
So football is having a successful season so far with a 4-0 record with their recent win against Martha's Vineyard. Cross country, last week, they won their two matches against Mashpee and Sandwich. And field hockey girls is also having a successful season so far. They beat Norwell last week, and they have two big games next week against East Bridgewater and Silver Lake.
All right, so our girls' soccer team has been really working hard this season. It has been a little tough because we have a small team this year, but we are making it work. We're playing strong and being positive on the field. Our record is 2-6, but we are playing our hearts out. Our goals are to make it to playoffs and keep working hard this season.
And for boys' soccer, we actually have a program this year after two years of not having anything. It's a young team. Thank you. Thank you. Very young team, great group of boys. I'm proud of all of them. I wouldn't be playing my senior year without them. And we actually aren't even a bad team. We're hanging with the varsity schedule, the 18-year-olds as little ninth graders. I remember being in their shoes. But yeah, we're working hard, and we're playing hard, and we actually tied our first game. So we're doing pretty good so far. Thank you.
Zach, and I know that recently, there was an article in The Globe.
Oh, yeah.
That kind of celebrated your leadership of that team and kind of your own personal dedication to ensuring that the boys' soccer team came back. So we thank you for your leadership and everything you've done in support of the boys' soccer team.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you all for being here. We love to hear about student achievement and the fun that you guys get to have it on the field. So thank you for coming in, for sharing the update with us.
And for the girls, same thing. I know you're just working really hard. For a while, you just had the exact number, right? So you're playing a lot of full games.
Bless you.
So I know the challenge of that, so I thank you for all your effort and intensity. You'll put it on the field as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
How many seniors will you be losing next year?
The girls are losing those two.
Oh, so it's going to...
That's just us two.
Yeah, so it'll be good for building.
And boys?
We actually have four this season, including myself.
But we feel pretty strong that there's a group coming up that's going to be able to maintain.
Yeah, a great group of boys coming up.
So we feel like both programs are going to be able to thrive a little over in the next couple of years.
Great. That's great.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for your time. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so that brings us to comments from the general public. I'm not sure if there's anyone on Zoom. There are. We have a few people that are dialing from home, so if there's someone that is remotely on Zoom that would like to participate in public comment, if you could just please put your name in the chat to be recognized. If there's anyone here in the room that would like to speak, you're more than welcome to come up to the microphone.
I don't see anybody putting their name into the chat.
Yep, seeing no motion in the room and no names in the chat, we shall move right on to the approval of minutes. And this week, we are approving two sets of minutes. One is from the August 14, 2023, open session that are revised, and then the other minutes are from the September 11, 2023, open session minutes. So if someone would like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the August 14, 2023, open session minutes revised, and the September 11, 2023, open session minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And again, since we are hybrid in this meeting, all of our votes will be a roll call. So Kelly, would you like to go first?
Kelly Meadie, aye.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Jackie Legg, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Thank you, everyone. So that brings us to communications.
So we have a couple of communications this evening. First, we're excited to announce that we've received two grants. First, we received a $25,000 planning grant to start a clean energy innovation pathway at the middle high school. The clean energy innovation pathway will allow students to get applied, hands-on learning opportunities in the renewable energy sector, which is a growing high-demand industry across Massachusetts. The state was actually very selective for the clean energy pathways. They took applications from throughout the state, and only six school districts have received the planning grant. So we're one of the six school districts in Massachusetts to receive the planning grant. And something that's a little different about this innovation pathway, I know as a committee we've talked a lot about innovation pathways, is usually you have to establish an industry-based partner, but it's the school's responsibility to find those industry-based partners. So, for example, for environmental science, it's Makepeace. They're our industry-based partner. For this pathway, the state is actually, they've identified the partner. So they're going to be pairing us up with a corporation. So the state's already done that groundwork.
Right.
Because they're really looking to grow the clean energy field within Massachusetts. So we're excited about having this planning grant and having the opportunity to be on kind of the cutting edge of this field in terms of work that's happening at the high school level in Massachusetts. So that's just an outstanding opportunity for the Carver Public Schools and for our students. The second notification we received from the state since we last met, we were also happy to report to receive a $50,000 grant that supports our other two innovation pathways. So it's just an implementation grant that we applied for to receive additional funds to support both EAS and MET. And more information will be coming out over the next couple of months. We actually talked about doing a presentation sometime this fall, early winter, as kind of an update on where we are with our innovation pathways and what we'll be using this money to support in terms of the growth of those pathways. So those are both exciting communications.
Absolutely. Those are the best type of communications.
And then the other thing in the school committee's background is just the Reed's Collaborative Quarterly Report. So once every three months, Reed's kind of sends an update out to school committees. It's a one-pager. I'm not going to necessarily go through it for you. You have any background. And I guess the one thing that I would point out is that Reed's Executive Director, Teresa Craig, retired at the end of last school year, and we're looking forward to working with the new executive director of Reed's Collaborative. Her name is Diana Maderos.
Great. Thank you for that update. And that brings us to reports from the superintendent and personnel updates.
Okay, personnel movement since we last met. We have some new hires. Derek Howard is a custodian third shift at the elementary school, Diana Carlson in food services, and Sydney LaLiberty as an ESP at the middle high school. We have one transfer. So Janice Bennett, a former teacher for the Carver Public Schools, was retired, is going to be moving from, into a long-term subposition for grade five. So she's going to be the long-term sub for maternity leave in grade five from a math position she's doing currently. We did have one resignation. Gail Carey is a lunchroom monitor at the elementary school. And we have one retirement, which we actually announced last year and celebrated last year's retirements, but the official effective date of the retirement is this Friday, October 6. So Paula Murphy, special education teacher at the middle high school, is retiring effective on Friday.
Great. Thank you for that update. And that brings us to vision of the graduates. I am very excited about it.
All right, so we're excited to have Mrs. Cabral here to present the approved vision of the graduate, kind of take us through the process, and talk about the document a little bit.
Welcome.
Thank you. So yeah, I am very excited to join you tonight and talk about our vision of the graduate. The document that you see is a year's, a solid year's worth of work that many people contributed to. So just the development of our vision started last September during a half-day professional development time. There were approximately 12 staff members, myself included, who met to talk about what skills, what qualities do we want our students to have upon graduation. So this, over the course of the year, we researched other schools also, how the high schools typically have visions of their graduate documents. But this is designed specifically for Carver. There's not another document that looks just like this one. But we had lots of conversation about what qualities we wanted to have and what would describe those qualities for our students. And we came up with our initial ideas. We presented it at a faculty meeting. The entire faculty got to weigh in and give us some additional language. We went back to the table and revised. We went back to the faculty. We showed it to, School Improvement Council weighed in on it. School Improvement Council consists of parents, students, administration, teachers, and we had student advisory committees look at it. So over the course of the year, we got lots of input from our school community to come up with this final version. Not only did we look at the language of it, but the visual of it as well. And Gina Marie Russell is the designer of this beautiful document, and she put up with us a lot because we revised and revised and revised till we came up with what we really are truly happy with. So what you're looking at here, the six highlighted words going around the circle, those are our qualities. And underneath the qualities are the descriptors. So I won't go through and read them exactly for you. You can read them. But the qualities include a critical thinker. We wanted our students to seek to understand, to question, explore, to think critically. We wanted them to be responsible individuals and take ownership for their actions, wanted them to just be responsible, wanted them to be collaborative teammates, to work together, respect others, to be open to others' ideas. And as you look at these, you can see that they're written as I statements. That was deliberately as well, because really, our students are going to look at this document from grade six through 12, and we wanted affirmations as they read them and as they think about them and grow up with them. We want them to realize that these are all things that they can achieve and want them to read as I statements. We also have the global citizen, want our students to learn and understand that not only are they part of the community of Carver, but globally, they're part of a much larger community, and how they can have a role in those communities, and how they can impact others, and how they should respect others' differences and be open to other people's ideas. And then, healthy human, we want them to develop life skills and learn how to physically take care of themselves, and to be an effective communicator, that they can communicate effectively both speaking and in writing. And of course, being part of an effective communicator is also to develop appropriate listening skills. When we designed this as well, something that Gina was very patient with us, we wanted them to read in a circular form. Initially, we started to go like progressively, one column after the other, but we didn't want it, visually, we wanted it to appear that we're working at developing all of these skills at once. It's not like you need to accomplish the first one before you can work on the second one. So that's how this document came to be. Now, the work that is ahead of us this year, teachers started over the summer working on embedding this document into our curriculum, and we will continue to do a lot of that work, how to incorporate this language, and what do we already have in our curriculum that applies to these skills, so that when we're instructing our students, we can draw our attention to, like, when we complete this project, this is what we're working on developing. And then, in addition to that, we're talking about how do we have our students, how do we demonstrate student progress and growth in developing these skills? And in that, we have seven teachers, one at each grade level, who have volunteered to run a pilot program. So during wind block, once a cycle, each one of those seven teachers is going to meet with 15 students, and the same 15 students over the course of the year, they're going to work with those students to develop a digital profile or portfolio. So, for example, a student works for six days and has all these experiences in school, and then on that seventh day, when, they go to their teacher, and they reflect on what work they've done over the course of the week, and what was I proud of, what really demonstrated growth in one of these areas, and start to... And what was I proud of? What really demonstrated growth in one of these areas? And start to download it and create their own digital portfolio. And then in turn, the teacher who's overseeing those 15 students weekly can give feedback to the teachers and say, like, okay, now I have my 15 kids. They spent the wind period looking at their work. They downloaded this document into their portfolio. Then that wind teacher could reach out and say, Mrs. Cabral, you should know that your students were proud of this work and they've added it to their portfolio. So it's just a great opportunity for us to use this wind block to collect data and develop this, so that it's effective.
That's great. And really bring it to life.
Can I ask you a question about that? Just in terms of how are the students going to be selected in terms of participation? Are you even looking for volunteers? It's not a leading question.
So, and I don't know that I have like 100% answer, because I really think it's going to vary by teacher who's leading the group. Interesting, some of the teachers might be like a seventh-grade teacher right now, but spent their year with eighth graders. So they're current eighth graders, but they're a seventh-grade teacher. And they wanted to draw back some of the students that they've had in the past to work with them, because right now, everyone's new to everyone. So there was an opportunity for them to work with students that they no longer have in the classroom every day. But we also definitely talked about selecting a diverse group of students, so that it's reflective of our student population. So there might be some recruitment and selection process going on in each group. And I'm sure if students want to be involved in it, then they'll have that opportunity too.
I really love this initiative.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it's great.
The document's very nice.
Right, the design is amazing.
Pull it down while we put it back up.
I'm a very visual person, and it's very eye-catching. So
Thank you.
Thank you for all the time and effort that you put into it, that the committee put into it, and Gina, of course, thank you for all of your efforts. It's a, it's a pretty amazing document. So very proud of all the work that you all did. So thank you.
Everybody contributed to it. It was a lot.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you so much. Super exciting. Okay, so next, we have MCAS scores and district accountability data.
Yep, so I've kind of put these two items together, because obviously, they're related. And I just want to make a kind of couple of general statements before we get into the two presentations. I did separate out the presentations between MCAS scores and district accountability, because they're related, but they're not exactly the same thing. MCAS scores are part of your district accountability rating. Overall, our scores have stayed relatively flat as compared to last year. And in general, in some places, are below the state average. So obviously, we're concerned about this. The administration, the teachers are going to be using some time on the full-day professional development day coming up on October 6th to really develop an MCAS improvement plan for each building that we'll present back to the school committee. If not at the October 23rd meeting, definitely the November 13th meeting. We're going to work out the timing of that a little bit. Probably because we want to present it to the staff before we present it to the school committee. So we'll work out, we'll work out the timing of that piece. And obviously, we're going to have the staff involved in that process. And then in terms of the accountability system, this is the first year school districts in Massachusetts have received an accountability rating since the pandemic. So I'll kind of do an overview of how the accountability system works, how it's set up. And overall, our rating is a district not requiring assistance or intervention with moderate progress towards meeting goals. And that might make a little more sense once I do the presentation. But that's, that's the end result, is that is, that is our official accountability rating. And then through the presentation, we'll get to how we got that. And the first slide really tells a story. And it's going to be a consistent story that we're going to see throughout the presentation. And the story is, we have too many students in partially meeting. So when we look at this graph, this is the percentage of students who scored exceeding in MCAS in blue, meeting in the teal green. I might be a little colorblind. I think that's the right color we'll call it. Partially meeting is the orange, and not meeting is the red. And the orange should not be the largest bar in all of these slides. And so we're going to, we're going to do some comparisons, and we're going to talk about comparison to state averages. And we're going to see that in many places, we're below the percentage of students with meeting exceeding. But I also want to point out, we're also, we have fewer students not meeting than the state averages. So when you look, and that, that's not necessarily represented throughout the presentation, but I want people to be aware of that. It really comes down to, we have too many, we have too many students in partially meeting. Certainly, we don't want any student to be in not meeting, and some of those bars are a little large. But in comparison to the state, actually, it's, we have fewer students not meeting across the board than the state does. But we have fewer students also exceeding and meeting, you know, so we need, we have too many students in that partially meeting section. So this is English ELA, so that's my general overview. And then as we go through the slides, you're going to see that consistent theme. That theme is consistent throughout the presentation. So these are all our ELA scores from third grade through 10th grade. You know, obviously, our goal would be to have our graphs kind of look a little more like the 10th grade, which you can't see up there because the picture blocks it out on your screen. But those at home can see it. And if you had the presentation up, you could see it. But there we go. Thanks, Chris. So now you can see it. So, you know, we, what we'd like to see is all of our grades look a little more like 10th grade. You know, a little larger, exceeding, though this isn't perfect either. Obviously, we want this to be higher. We definitely, we always want our green to be higher than our orange. You know, so we want our number of students meeting being higher than our students that are partially meeting. But the 10th grade is more indicative of what, closer to what we'd like it to look like, if that makes sense. So again, same broad scope perspective on math for grades three through 10. And then we have that same theme of, we have too many students in partially meeting. What we really want people to look like is fourth grade. So the fourth grade scores were the strength, fourth grade math were actually the strength throughout the school district. That is the one place where we are exceeding state averages, and we have a graph that looks more like we want it to look like. You know, obviously, we'd like, we'd like to have fewer students in the not meeting in fourth grade. That number is a little high. So we'd like to shift everybody a little bit. But if everyone looked like fourth grade across the board here, three through 10, we would actually probably feel pretty positive about our overall score results. That's kind of the target of where we want to go. And then same with science. Science, as people, I think people know, is only tested in fifth, eighth, and 10th grade. The interesting thing about the 10th grade is everyone passed, so we don't have, we don't have anybody in not meeting in 10th grade, which is certainly above the state average. We also don't have anybody exceeding. So then again, we still have too many students in partially meeting for our 10th grade, for our 10th grade science scores.
If not, I'll get it. That's not the important thing right now.
Kelly, you're not.
Sorry.
That's okay.
No problem.
Child.
So this is very, this is the this is the comparison between us and the state in terms of the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations. So I'm not going to read the numbers for you across. Obviously, 10th grade is, there's, the 10th grade scores are always higher. So at the state level, the 10th grade scores are higher with 58% of the students meeting exceeding, and we're at 53. I mean, historically, over time, where we'd want to get back to, is our 10th grade scores were always very strong and all, pretty much consistently above the state average in 10th grade. That's not the case here. We're still a little bit below. Obviously, we are a little concerned about our seventh and eighth grade numbers. They're certainly low. One thing I do want to point out is that seventh and eighth grade did have our lowest participation rate in in all of our grades. So in most of our grades, we actually had a 98 or 99% participation rate. Seventh and eighth grade, that's where our, I don't know, I don't have the exact numbers, I don't want to quote a number. That's where our most opt-outs were. So we did have students in both seventh and eighth grade. I think our participation rate in seventh grade was 95%, and in eighth grade was either 95 or 94%. And those were just because, it wasn't because they didn't take tests, it's because their parents had made a decision to opt them out. So and it should be pointed out that anybody who opts out, their scores do count as a zero, so they don't, they're not, so that is factored into the overall percentages here. But, but it's still, it doesn't make up the gap. So I'm not, I'm not trying to say that that makes up the gap in any way, shape, or form. But it has to be a factor. It has to be considered a little bit, that in the, at the middle school level, that's where we had the largest number of students opt out. Math, again, fourth grade's our strength. So fourth grade is the one place we scored above the state average in terms of students scoring, meeting, or exceeding. And again, saw our lowest scores in seventh and eighth grade, with other grades closer to being consistent with that average. And then same in science. We saw that in the science results, you know, so we, we were down here in terms of the percentage of students who were 29% who scored meeting or exceeding, and really, meeting, because we saw there were no exceeding, so it was meeting. But we also did well in terms of having, getting everybody past the exam and meeting the graduation requirement. So that, that's great. So we also look at some subgroup data. So we compare, for some of the subgroup data, we did it for grade spans. That's how it's presented at the state level. So this is English grades three through eight, so there's all, all test takers grades three through eight. Look, and this is our percentage of students who scored meeting or exceeding for students with disabilities, our EL students, our low-income students, and our high-need students. Again, it's actually a similar projection in terms of percentage of where we fall in comparison to the state expectations in those areas. In math, math, we're a little stronger. So obviously, our EL students actually outperform the state in math throughout the district, in grades three through eight. And we're very close in terms of our low-income students, in terms of the percentage of meeting and exceeding. Our growth. Now, certainly, you can make the argument that the most important thing to look at is not just the, everything we've looked at so far is the straight-scaled scores. It's how students scored. It's not looking at all in terms of how they grew from their previous year's tests, not from where they grew from previously. So this was, our growth data was actually a little bit better. Now, certainly, the goal with growth data is always, you want to be over the 50th percentile. Because if you, the growth data is simply, it's, it's a mathematical formula. What they do is they take, they take students within a four-point range, and they compare those students' scores to everybody who scored within that four-point range across the state. And how far did you grow? If you're the 99th percentile, you grew the most. If you're the first percentile, you grew the least. And so this growth is not, is actually against all other students in the state who scored within a four-point band that you scored the previous year. So 50% is average, it's right in the middle. Anything above 50% is strong growth. Anything below 50% is weaker growth. So our growth numbers, so fourth grade, we had a good growth number. We, even though, but interestingly enough, even though our, sorry, this is in ELA. So in ELA, we had a, and 51, for our 10th grade students, we had a 51 growth percentage, so we were above the state average. In math, again, the fourth grade scores were really strong, and we saw a, you know, we scored a 67, in the 67th percentile in terms of our students' growth. And another thing to point out in terms of the positive, when you go back and you look, when you look at the seventh grade scores, oh, I'm going the wrong way. I'm flying through. I'm trying to, trying to be too smart myself. So when you look at the seventh grade scores, in math, you see it down here. But our students actually grew at a higher rate than the students across the state. So that, you know, so you, you try to find some positives, and that's a thing, that's, that's a piece to look at where, so we actually sat a 56 percentile in terms of growth. So those students were a little below. They, they actually grew significantly last year. So even though they're still behind and not where we want them to be, they showed positive growth. So those are all the factors you have to look at as you look at all this data. We always historically do some regional comparisons. So we'll just go through, we do not, we have this for every grade level. When we meet with the teachers on Friday, we're going to look at this through every grade level. We just picked out some selected grade levels to look at, which we historically look at, in terms of, we put fourth grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade. So fourth grade ELA, this was your comparison to regional communities. Eighth grade ELA, so obviously, both concerned that they were both at the bottom of the chart for fourth and eighth grade. And then for 10th grade, we're in the middle of the 10, 11 districts we selected and closer to the state average. In math, obviously, we know the fourth grade score was strong, so we're on the higher end in terms of our district comparisons. In fourth grade, eighth grade, we saw the scores were not very strong, so we're down more towards the, the left end of the scale. And then 10th grade, again, we're more in the middle, more towards the state average in terms of our overall scores in comparison to regional communities. For then, fifth grade science, eighth grade science, and 10th grade science. If you want to stop me at any point, you certainly can do that. I do want to spend some time here, because I'm, I'm concerned about this data. And it's something that the administration has already started to look at, and we're going to put some plans in place to try to address absenteeism. So chronic absenteeism, that's the percentage of students who miss 18 or more days of school. This data is collected by DESI, and it doesn't matter if the absences are excused, unexcused, maybe at the high school level, suspensions, or anything that could have a student not be in school. Ultimately, DESI just says, how many days did they miss? And if you miss more than 18, for whatever the reason is, you're identified as chronically absent. And obviously, this slide tells a story. Prior to the pandemic, then DESI collects this data based on what they call non-high school and high school. So non-high school is K through eight. So the blue data represents all students in Carver, grades K through eight. The green data represents students in Carver in grades nine through 12. So prior to the pandemic, in 2019, 5.5% of our non-high school students were identified as chronically absent, missed 18 or more days of school. In 2019, it was 7.2% at the high school level. Last year, DESI did not collect this data during the pandemic, so there is no data for 20 or 20, 20 or 21. In '22, obviously, we were still coming back from the pandemic. The numbers were very high. So at the non-high school level, it was 25.5 and 32.5 at the high school level. But even last year, it was 14.4 at the non-high school level and 29.2 at the high school level. To me, that's a, that's a staggering number, that 29% of our high school students missed 18 or more days of school last year. And 14.4% of our, of our elementary, our pre, our K through eight students. Now, this data is, this is not a Carver problem. This is a Massachusetts problem. So I do have the, it's not on the slide, but I have the numbers for the state. So in 2019, we actually did really well. In 2019, the non-high school for state was 9%, and the high school was 14.3. So I did, it was really good. Well, our kids came to school on a, which I would have guessed, that if you looked at the whole state, all of your districts, that our students come to school more often. The state data for last year was, non-high school was 24.1, so we were above, and 31.8 for high school. So we were above in both. And then last year, we were also above 13.4 and 26.4 for the state. So people improved, but it's 26.4% of high school students across the state of Massachusetts missed more than 18 days of school last year. So the pandemic definitely changed a lot of things. The biggest, one of the biggest things is kids coming to school. Now, obviously, we do a lot of messaging on stay at home if you're sick, and, and that became the shift. And then obviously, some students just haven't responded back to the routine and the regular of going to school. So this is, you know, I said that our next, in one of our future meetings, the 23rd and 13th of November, we'll have an MCAS plan. I can certainly tell you the power of our MCAS plan is going to be about student attendance and getting students back to school and following up with families for non-attendance and doing all those things. And both buildings are already signed to work on that at the high school and at the elementary school. So how did our chronically absent students do district-wise? In ELA, the big number there is fourth, you know, the, the percentage did not, not meeting expectations doubled for our chronically absent students. And in math, it's actually And then math, it's actually more concerning. Our not meeting doubled, but then our, our partially meeting went to seventy-two percent. So only twelve percent of our chronically absent students, uh, got exceeds or meets compared to thirty-nine percent of our not chronically absent students. So I think that just shows that we need students to come to school. Uh, and that has to really be a focus, because if you're not in school, it's just more difficult to learn. I mean, that sounds so basic and so fundamental, uh, but when you go back and look at this data, and I don't know if, it'd be interesting to see if, how the community responds to those numbers, to see that, you know, twenty-nine percent of our high school students missed more than eighteen days of school last year. That's, that's a huge number.
It is a huge number.
It's an absolute huge number.
Um, and then so, science, we see a similar trend. It was interesting that in all three subject areas, in EL math and science, that the percentage of not meeting doubled for the chronically absent students versus the not chronically absent students. Uh, so obviously, our students who were attending school on a regular basis did better. And there's a, a myriad of factors go into that, it's not solely, uh, because they didn't come to school. You know, sometimes the reasons why students come to school are also impacting them and impacting their ability to be successful. Because there's a wide variety of reasons why students may not come to school. But ultimately, it still goes back to that two thousand nineteen data of, uh, whatever, whatever that two thousand nineteen data was, a five point five and seven point two. You know, we have, we have to get closer to that, we have to get back to that place where though that's the percentage of our students who are missing more than eighteen days of school in a school year and get away from this twenty-nine point two and fourteen point four. Again, this is not a CAVR only problem, I gave the state numbers, the state numbers are actually very, actually fairly consistent with our numbers. And probably fairly consistent in terms, I didn't, we didn't, we didn't crunch any state data on chronic absenteeism and impact on MCAS exams, I'm sure we could have, and we haven't done that yet. Uh, but I would bet it's probably pretty similar too. You know, so when you go back to the beginning of the presentation, I certainly don't want to send a message here that our, our scores being underperforming, and I view them as underperforming. That our scores being there is because we have all these chronically absent students, the state has all these chronically absent students too. So when making those comparisons, we have to, you know, acknowledge that. Uh, and certainly not trying to, uh, say that's the reason why. But I think it's a, it's a place we certainly have to start of getting students back into school on a regular basis and getting back into that routine of being in school on a regular basis. Because I think that really does impact students' abilities, uh, in terms of, so one of the things we've been, so there's been a lot of discussion about the status since it was released a week and a half ago in the schools. And, you know, there, there's a wide range of issues that come up from, um, students, their ability to sustain and maintain during testing. You know, there's a lot of teachers who feel like, I don't want, I don't want to use the word lost interest, they just didn't sustain, they didn't get on the test and say, I'm gonna stay with this. But that, that could also be tied to not coming to school. That could also be tied to a year and a half of not having a, fully, being fully educated through remote learning and hybrid learning and all those things we went through. That those helps ingrain and develop habits of students that now we need to break down. And then also, on the other side of that, I think we certainly can say that, uh, teachers need to increase their rigor. And, and increase the, ask students to do more and ask students to retain, sustain longer. Uh, and that certainly has been a conversation as well. Because I know later on in the evening, uh, I feel like, sorry, I feel like I'm just rambling off here. Uh, but you know, later on in the evening, you're gonna look at the Thrive Act, um, and that whole, and the, and they reference that certainly through the comments in the APC. You know, my personal perspective on the MCAS exam is always, if you do, if kids are coming to school and you're doing a good job teaching them, the tests will take care of themselves. And so if we have good instruction, we have a connected curriculum and people are working hard, the test score is gonna improve and kids are coming to school. So to me, I, I've never been a proponent of, uh, teach to the test. I've never been a huge pushing on the faculty of, you have to teach to the test and here's, do sample test questions every day and do this every day and do that every day. I want them to be really great, dynamic teachers. And if we have really great, dynamic teachers, the scores will improve. That's not in the presentation anywhere, but, uh, that's, that's how I feel about it.
No, we appreciate that.
So I just took this quote from the Boston Globe. Uh, "The wide chasm between most scores from before and after lockdowns and remote schooling testifies to the lasting effects of the chaos of the pandemic on children's learning." So this was from Boston Globe, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, that was the day after this test, all these results were released. The Globe had several articles in the paper that day about, uh, the MCAS scores. And the, the state's position, the state's argument is that the score, if you remember last year, we made the MCAS presentation, we said that everyone's scores kind of went like this. And then ours, our decline was sharper, and it was. And now everyone's kind of bottomed out. So we're kind of where we were, the state's gonna make the argument that the state's maybe starting to take the turn up the hill. Some people may disagree with that. I would be hard for me to argue that we're taking the turn up the hill. Certainly flattened out, we didn't get lower, we didn't continue to go down. So we've flattened the curve. I don't, that's not a good COVID statement, the COVID was almost flattened the curve. As we've, you know, we flattened out, now we want to get the growth, now we want to turn the corner and start going up and trying to get our scores back to where they were pre-pandemic. And, and that, that's where we're going. But ultimately, I just thought this was a good summary of where we are, that, you know, what happened during the pandemic, what happened to schooling really is, is gonna have lasting effects, uh, that we have to just keep working to, um, move students forward and have them progress. So next steps, um, we're gonna do analysis in action, so we're gonna be analyzing the results, we're gonna be looking, doing much deeper dive than I did tonight, looking at individual scores, looking at individual questions. But there's something already that's, so I said, one thing that stood out was our attendance. Uh, a second thing that stood out is our students' performance in writing last year. Uh, so I just wanted to show you this graph, and this is the type of more intense data dig we'll be doing with teachers, is on, in the ELA portions of the exams in grades three through ten. Uh, students did really well on the reading sections of the exams, where they had to read and comprehend and answer questions. You know, so this is the percentage of possible points they earned. And so in third grade, they earned fifty-seven percent of all possible points in reading. All the way up to tenth grade, uh, sixty-nine percent of all possible points. But on the writing portions and the essay portion, we earned a much lower percentage of our possible points, uh, across the board. Except the only thing that was really comparable was once you get up to tenth grade. And that's where, at the tenth grade level, that's where our scores were more competitive. You know, so right away, you're gonna see a trend that, uh, writing has to be a concern. So we have to be doing, yeah, I don't know what it's gonna look like in the plan yet, but we have to be doing more writing, uh, at all grade levels, and we have to be doing more rigorous writing. Uh, because we can't have our students performing, only getting twenty-six or twenty-three percent of the points, uh, on the writing portions of the test. Which clearly played a huge role, that's our partially to meeting. So having kids improve their performance, having students improve their performance in writing on next, on next couple of years' exams, that's gonna move on, shift our students from partially meeting to meeting. Uh, so this is the type of analysis we'll be doing, and I kind of already said this, you know, we're gonna be establishing data teams and develop an action plan with deliverables. So we do feel like, you know, based on our scores, we were disappointed that they are flat. Uh, and so we need to see them improve, uh, and we feel like we have to develop a specific action plan to do that, which will come to the committee, um, in the next couple of meetings. So that, I'll take any questions or thoughts on the MCAS data.
I can remember Meredith saying something about it was gonna take three years to get that whole flat, or something like that.
So that, it, it does, it says that one, it, the data shows that one missed year of education takes three years to remediate. And so if we say that students lost a year of education, it's gonna take three years to remediate. But we're already a year or two into that, so we should start seeing some movement. And the interesting part is that the article that I quoted here from the Globe, um, they, their data, they were laying out, if, if the state stays on the trend that it stayed on, not CAVR, the state of Massachusetts, because they said they started to show a little bit of growth, then it would take eight years to get back, so they were saying eight years from two thousand twenty-three. So they're saying it would be, if we continued on this level of growth, it would be two thousand thirty-one before the state's data would match what it was prior to the pandemic in two thousand nineteen, uh, two thousand twenty. And obviously, there are the articles, it was an editorial, the article's point was, that's not good enough. We can't, can't take eight years, that's a, that's a career in school for students. Uh, so we can't, can't take eight years to catch up to where we were, we have to do it sooner, we have to do it faster. And we have to be more thoughtful about, uh, what we're doing to do that.
Scott, just a quick question, so is one of the things that we're gonna be doing is reviewing the current ELA curriculum that we have in place in the elementary school?
I, I think, uh, I think we're gonna be looking at the writing piece of it. Versus the, so we're just the, we're just in the beginning stage of the implemented, implementation of units of study, you know, we're only in our second year of that. And, you know, even looking at that one slide, the reading portion was, uh,
Was good.
Was good, uh, but now I think we have to look at the writing piece of it at the elementary school and at the middle high school. Because the reading, the reading scores were below, really across the board, except for tenth grade. Uh, so I think, I think that, uh, you know, certainly three through eight, we need to look at that, really K through eight. And then the other thing the committee should know, which will be part of the plan, is the, we were concerned about the middle, middle school math curriculum and its alignment. So we're actually in the process of implementing a new middle school math curriculum this year. Uh, it's called illustrative, uh, and the teachers are actually undergoing training for that right now. So we actually have shifted the, um, six through eight math curriculum. So certainly, uh, in my mind, the response has to be comprehensive, has to look at attendance, it has to look at attitude and approach uh, in terms of, you know, saying the test is important. And because there's some concern that there was a, a messaging out there, uh, from the community, from school, that this wasn't that, the MCAS isn't that important. So we have to, I think we do have to do some messaging that the MCAS is important. Uh, and then certainly has to look at instruction and curriculum. So I think our plan will encompass all those things, it will talk about attendance, it will talk about approach and attitudes towards the test. It will look at instructional strategies and practices and, and the implementation of curriculum.
Right.
Great.
Um, I have a general question about MCAS. Have we ever, has the district ever done any type of, um, like presentations or any communications directly with parents explaining, you know, what the value of MCAS is, why their students should take it, has there ever been that approach?
We're going back to when I was the principal at the middle high school. Well, I, I, I'm Rubika.
I know there's a lot of years of experience in this room.
I know, I thought, when I was the high school principal, I actually used to do an MCAS presentation when the scores came out. I will say, it was never,
Never well attended?
It was never well attended, I didn't have, uh, seventy-five or a hundred people in the room. Uh, I would have, you know, ten people in the room, maybe fifteen people in the room, uh, and talk about the value of MCAS exams. Uh, and, and the scoring and how, uh, what data's out there and what people can look at. So I'm gonna show you a little bit, I meant to actually show you that tonight, so I'll go back to that in a second. I don't know the last time you had a presentation that was directly to parents saying the MCAS is important, do really well.
Right, other than a letter, so we do, you know, send a parent letter, opt out of MCAST, it'd be an exercise.
Yep.
And then we do an all call, but we definitely sent a letter.
Okay.
We've not had an in-person meeting of probably about eight, eight or years maybe, but when we did, it was very small volume.
Okay.
And we used to do things like, uh, we used to have an MCAS breakfast. So we, we had breakfast, you know, we have all the students before they came in and took the MCAS exam, we'd make sure they had breakfast. Everyone gets free breakfast now anyhow, but we, I mean, but we used to do things within the building, uh, that promoted to the students of this is an important valuable time. Christine, are you gonna add something?
Yeah, if anyone who submitted a letter that they wanted their child to opt out of MCAS, we contacted and kind of asked them to reconsider and talk about the importance of it and the impact on our school.
Right.
Um, then in the past, we've had like class meetings, like kick off to MCAS and kind of pump it up with the kid. So that might end up being part of our action plan, we talked about doing that, because we haven't done that.
Since before, yes, since before, at least since before the pandemic, since we had MCAS.
As I know, I hear a lot of students that have, you know, they get anxious about the test, right? Anxiety and MCAS in my, from what I've, you know, gathered, um, kind of go hand in hand, so. Um, and I think since coming back from COVID, I think there's just been in certain sectors of societal shift in how people view education and how people view standardized testing. Um, that, you know, was unfortunately, um, having a negative impact on student learning. I'm looking forward to, to hearing your ideas and seeing what you, you're gonna implement and, um, hopefully, I mean, not that it's fun to take MCAS, but I don't know, maybe if there's a way to,
Make it fun.
Make it, make, right, I mean, make it feel so it isn't so heavy for these, for these kids, that they don't get anxious. And I know some kids have trouble going to sleep at night because they're nervous about the test the next day. And if there's a way that we can maybe address the, you know, social emotional piece of that, uh, maybe that would be helpful. I don't know if you have anything that you want, anyone has anything else they want to add.
Yeah, I think that it's, it's seen as a really daunting thing. And it is important that it's seen as like big, because it is important, um, not necessarily the students themselves. But I don't think a lot of students understand like the purpose of MCAS, like I know I didn't really understand why we were taking it until I got to high school. So I think maybe addressing that with the younger students in like, not like a very direct way, like a very like soft way to just kind of introduce them to the concept of standardized testing and making it out to not be this big scary thing would be really important, especially improving scores down the line if they had that foundation.
Sorry, Chris, I had, I had to point myself inside. No, but I think those, I think those are great points. Um, and certainly we can take that approach at all grade levels, you know, so that students have an understanding of, why, why do you take this exam, what does it mean? And then also, um, I think there's a value in terms of saying to them, we want to, you, we want to have pride in your school district and, and do well and be successful, uh, and be able to say that, uh, we've met with some success, so that there's some importance to that.
Right. Thank you for,
I, I did want to show, share one other thing, so I'll just put it out there. And I, just to the community out there, uh, if you go to the DESI website and you can really, you can literally just go to Google and search school and district profiles and you can find CAVR. And it's very easy to find, when you get, when you, if you Google school and district profiles, it will bring you to the DESI website if you live in Massachusetts, because the computer's not smart, those, that's what you're looking for. Uh, and then you put CAVR in and you'll get all of CAVR's data. And I'm not gonna show you all this data, but really, there's a trove of data out there. If you're someone who's really interested in MCAS and want to start diving through the data and getting into very specific, uh, results, you know, that could be, you can, you can do item analysis, you can go, uh, item by item. And, and look and see where, where we did well and where we didn't do well, uh, in terms of, you know, different pieces of it. You can look at individual questions, you can actually pull the questions up, so right here, you can pull the standard, you can pull up the question. You know, very like a quick look at this goes back to, if you look down the bottom of this chat, which I don't know if everybody can see, those are actually two writing prompts, uh, and I'm looking at fourth grade English. You know, we scored seven percent and nine percent behind the state, uh, on those writing prompts. You're going back to our example, where are the places we were even at the state average? So like, you, all this data is publicly available. You can go on to the, search school and district profiles and you can spend as much time looking at MCAS data as you would like. So I just wanted to make the community aware of that and say that,
Good to know.
Uh, for transparency standpoint, you can do as much of a deep dive into MCAS as you would like to. All right, uh, ready to transition to accountability?
Yes. I believe so. Does anybody need to transition?
Accountability. So what is it? An accountability system is a set of policies and practices that the state uses to measure and hold schools and districts responsible for raising all student achievement and to prompt and support improvement where necessary. The current accountability system was implemented in two thousand eighteen to meet the federal requirements under the Every Student Should Succeed Act, ESSA. The system was paused during the pandemic from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. So this is actually only the third time that the Cal Public Schools has received an accountability rating under this system. We received one in two thousand eighteen, one in two thousand nineteen, been off since two thousand nineteen, and now we're back, uh, in two thousand twenty-three. Uh, from Ron Curran, who's the Associate Commissioner of Data and Accountability. So he's the person who runs the system. Uh, and he always says, if you go see Rob Curran, he will, he'll always make this statement. Uh, the accountability system is one piece of evidence. It's certainly not the only element that represents equality school. The accountability system has the following very clear ratings. Uh, so you're right, divided into two groups. Schools not requiring assistance or intervention, which is eighty-five percent of the schools in Massachusetts, or schools requiring assistance or intervention, which is fifteen percent of the schools. Um, and then under each of those, there's two, there's categories. Uh, so our category for this accountability rating system was, um, a district or both of our schools were schools with moderate progress towards meeting targets, uh, which also, that's what our district rating was, was moderate progress towards meeting targets. And we'll talk a little bit about what the targets are in a second and how targets are established. And ultimately that, that's a pretty clear statement of what we were. We made moderate progress. We made some progress on, towards meeting our district target, our district targets. And obviously the key point being we're identified as a school not requiring assistance or intervention by the state. Um, this is the same thing represented in a different form. So this is actually the exact same information. Uh, the two sections of not requiring assistance or intervention or require assistance. Um, this is what is actually in the accountability system. So again, the state breaks it up here as non-high schools and high schools. So non-high schools are K through eight, uh, high schools are nine through twelve. I'm not going to read all of this to you. Obviously it's student achievement through MCAS, so the MCAS scores are a big piece of this, uh, student growth. For high schools, it's your four-year cohort graduation rate. So the rate of students who graduate in four years from high school. Your extended engagement rate. So if a student doesn't graduate in four years, do they stay and go to year five and graduate? Uh, and then your annual dropout rate at the high school level. Both sides use English language proficiency. So progress made by your, uh, English language learners. Uh, and then additional indicators, uh, chronic absenteeism, uh, at both non-high school and high school. And then for high school, for it's the percentage of your eleventh and twelfth grade is completing advanced coursework, which is, uh, AP courses, I want to call it IB courses. We don't offer any IB courses similar to AP, uh, dual enrollment courses, project lead the way courses, or other selected rigorous courses like calculus or physics. Uh, so the state actually has a list of courses that they identify as, um, what they call, um, advanced coursework. They're real, actually, the list is actually smaller than you would think it is. It's mostly AP, uh, IB, dual enrollment, project lead the way, and then a small number of courses besides that, like for example, I gave the examples of calculus, I believe statistics is on that list, uh, and physics, uh, chemistry's not on the list. Uh, so it really is your high-end, uh, high, senior, senior level courses. And then this is the percentage that each counts. So obviously, two-thirds of your achievement of your rating in a non-high school is your, is your achievement data on MCAS. So that's two-thirds of the system. And then obviously ten percent for chronically absent and a twenty-three percent for student growth. Uh, and then there's your breakdown on the high school side where it's achievements a little less than fifty percent. And they add in that twenty percent for, uh, your graduation statistics, four-year cohort graduation rate, extended engagement, annual dropout, uh, and ten percent for your, uh, advanced coursework, which is this gets split five and five, five percent for chronic absenteeism, uh, five percent is the percentage of students completing advanced coursework. The K through eight level, it's just ten percent for chronic absenteeism. So target setting. DESI evaluates districts' past performance on their MCAS scores, uh, then determines what reasonable growth looks like over a period of time for all school, school districts. They use what's called the twenty-five percent growth model, saying that they'd like to see you grow by twenty-five percent over time. Uh, and using this process, DESI establishes one-year growth targets for all students in all subgroups. So every year they establish new targets. Your targets change every year based on the previous year's data and wanting to see you grow. Uh, if you're, you're eventually going to find out that, uh, based on your targets, you receive a score from zero to four. A zero, and we'll tell you, I'll tell you what those mean in a second. It's in the slide in one second. Uh, but if your scores are in the top ten percent in the state, you'll earn three or four points whether you meet your targets. So it's target driven. If you don't meet your target, um, or your scores decline, you get zero. But they said, if you don't meet your target, but you're still in the top ten percent in the state, then they give you the full points in the system. So I know this doesn't really mean a lot to people, but I just throw out what some of our targets were for this year. Uh, example of target setting for grades three through eight based on, this is based on our scaled MCAS scores. So for ELA, they wanted our student scores to go up by two point seven points. So if the scaled score was, the average scale score was four ninety-eight, they wanted it to be five hundred point seven. That was your target for all students, grades three through eight. And I don't, I won't read that through all of them. And certainly, you know, your, your lowest performing students have a larger target because they're farther behind. So they need to grow more. Um, generally that's true for your high need students too, but actually here our high needs did, historically, actually, our high need students, our special education students actually score very well in comparison to the state. So we have some lower, lower targets there actually because that, it's always that comparison between other groups within the state. Uh, so that, historically, that's a group that does well. Um, so.
Do you know, like what percentage of those are actually taking the test and what percentage have like the portfolio?
Oh, oh, so the, the guideline, I don't know the exact number. The guideline is that you should not have more than one percent of your students taking the alternative assessment or the portfolio assessment. Uh, I can't say that we were exactly at one percent. We were real close to it and we may have been a little bit over it. So but I'm not very, a small, very small percentage of our students, less, I feel compensating less than two percent of our students are taking the portfolio alternative assessment. And then they look at your targets and they give you a rating of zero to four. Uh, if you're, if you declined, so in some of our, whatever our place, if our MCAS scores went down, our scaled scores went from four ninety-eight to four ninety-seven, and our target was five hundred, you get a zero. You get zero points. Uh, if it's no change, if it's the same score, you get one point. If your scores improved year to year, but you didn't meet your target, you get two points. If you meet your target, you get three points. And if you exceed your target, you get four points. So every, every section, we'll see, I'll actually pull the data up in a minute and show you what our scores were. I just wanted to get a sense of what, what that zero to four means. Like, so when we look at the actual score report, which is also available on the website, which I'm going to show everybody, uh, you'll, you'll know what the zero, one, two, three, and four mean. Uh, so let's go look at it. This is from that same school and community profiles. This is our accountability data, which is widely available to the public. And these are our scores. So we did not have a percentage of lowest performing students at the high school level. And the interesting part of that is they didn't identify a cohort, but it is interesting because they gave people growth numbers. Because if you actually think about our tenth grade students, when they were in the eighth grade, they didn't take the MCAS exam because that was during the pandemic. I felt, I have to go back and track when they last took it, whether it was sixth grade or seventh grade. So they actually did growth data. So remember when we looked at the MCAS scores, there was a reported growth data for tenth graders? And we said it was actually pretty strong. It was like fifty-one percent. That was actually back to comparison to whenever they last took the MCAS, which I think would have been in sixth grade. Uh, so our, our tenth graders, last year's tenth graders, when they were in seventh grade, that was the pandemic year and there was no MCAS. That was twenty twenty. And they didn't take it in twenty twenty-one. And they took a modified version in twenty twenty-two. So the last time they took the full MCAS exam was in sixth grade. So their growth data was actually compared to what their sixth grade MCAS was to their tenth grade MCAS. Um, so they didn't, because they don't, remember, they don't take it in ninth grade. So there's no English MCAS in ninth grade. There's no ELA MCAS in ninth grade. So the elementary school has a lowest performing cohort because they took the MCAS last year. The, the, the year previous. And they compare them to the year previous, where those ninth graders didn't take it the previous year because they don't take an MCAS exam. So that's unusual. That's so this section over here that says lowest performing students, there's no data because there was, they didn't want to, they didn't want to identify your lowest performing students from sixth grade and then make judgments on it in the accountability system. So that, for this year, that section's off. Uh, now next year's students would have taken the eighth grade MCAS last year. Or this year's students, right? Uh, so this year's students were going to take, no, they were going to take it two years ago. They would have taken the MCAS. So I think the high school returned the lowest performing, uh, student data. Um, and so your lowest performing students actually count as a percentage. So they compare both lowest performing and all students because the goal of the accountability system is to get students to grow. So they want you to focus on your lowest performing students. So you can get better accountability ratings by having your lowest performing students perform better because they actually count equally in the system to all your students. If that makes sense. Uh, so I gave you the scores of zero to four of, and so you can see where, so English language arts achievement. Overall, for all students, grades three through eight, our achievement actually declined a little bit. So we received zero points. And also for all of our students, uh, for our lowest performing students, we received zero points. At the high school, the tenth graders, actually we met our, we exceeded our target, uh, in ELA. And we got all four points. So we were four, four for four. And then I'm not going to read each of these to you, but one thing I do want to point out, if you look at the growth section, uh, that is important, that's, that's important to look at when you're measuring growth versus achievement. And you can certainly make the argument that growth is, achievement's certainly important, but we want to focus on growth as well. So looking at that whole growth section all the way across, we either earned two, three, or four points. So that means our growth scores for all these students either improved, met their target, or exceeded their target. Well, actually, they're all twos and threes. So they either, they either improved or met their target. So our growth scores actually for MCAS were actually fairly strong. Um, interesting. You might be concerned when you look at the high school completion. Uh, certainly I was. I was surprised by that. The, it's the first time in the three times we've received this data that we didn't get four, four, four there. Um, so I just pulled out some of those numbers because I thought people might ask some questions about it. Uh, so, uh, here's our four-year graduation rates for the past five years that the data was kept. Uh, it was ninety-two point six percent in two thousand seventeen, ninety-three point six percent in two thousand eighteen, ninety-two point four percent in two thousand nineteen, uh, ninety-seven point two percent in two thousand twenty-two, ninety-one point eight. So we're compared back to the nine, two thousand twenty-two, which was, actually, I went back and I looked like ten, fifteen years. The ninety-seven point two was our highest graduation rate, four-year graduation rate, which is great. But once we reached that level, we certainly, we didn't meet our target. And, and we declined. So we got zero points. Now, the target, when you reach that level of success, they actually don't establish a higher target. So if, once you get above, how I took this data is once you get above ninety-five percent, your target becomes ninety-five percent. They don't want you to fall below that. Uh, so we went from ninety-seven point two to ninety-one, which is a fairly, that's a significant drop. And so we didn't meet our target, which was ninety-five percent. Uh, but comparatively to our data over time, it's very consistent with what our four-year cohort graduation rate is. Uh, so I, I can't, honestly, I can't really speak that knowledgeably of why, why we were so good at ninety-seven point two percent. Because that's basically like the, the entire class graduated in four years. Uh, and then we dropped down to ninety-one point eight. Same with dropout data. It's a very similar story. So the five years preceding this, we, our dropout rate was point seven percent, point two percent, which actually represented one student, point five percent, which represented two students, point five percent, which represented two students. Because we were consistently below one percent for four consecutive years, uh, target was set at one percent. Um, and similar thing, I think, once you reach that level, you, you, obviously when you're at point two percent, you can't grow from, you can, you can have zero. You can be a hundred percent. Uh, but that, that's not the expectation. So they actually set a lower bar. The lower bar was set at one percent for us. And our dropout rate came in at one point, uh, four percent, which is higher than it's been the last five years. But when you actually look at students, it's four, four or five students compared to two students, which isn't great. We don't want to have anybody drop out of school. We don't want it to be zero. Uh, but I also feel like in some ways we got punished a little bit in the system for performing really well for several years, uh, and then not performing quite as well. Uh, now the positive switch on that is next year, those numbers should come back because they'll readjust our targets. That sounds awful, but they'll, they'll readjust our targets based on those numbers. And our target will become, I don't know what it'll be exactly, but it'll probably be for four-year graduation rate, it'll probably be around ninety-three, ninety-four percent, which is probably pretty attainable. And for dropout rate, it will probably go back to one percent. And for many years, we were below one percent. I think that's attainable. So I wouldn't be shocked if next year we come back and see a four and a four in those two categories. Uh, and then what was also, contrary to what I told you earlier about chronic absenteeism, we did receive four out of four points because we went down. And we went down significantly. You know, we went down from, uh, thirty-two percent to twenty-seven percent. We had a five. So this is, because this system is all about improvement. So we may not be happy that it's twenty-nine point two percent of our high school students missed eighteen or more days, but we improved. And we improved better than what our target was based on the math. So we got four points for that. But we would never assign ourselves four points for where we stand in terms of chronic absenteeism. Uh, and same with the elementary school. You know, we had, we had significant improvement there. So we received all the points. So all they do is this, this, I'm like, this is all just math. They literally add up these points and give you a percentage. You know, so adding up all of our points, we ended up with a criterion reference of forty-two percent. So what that means is we earned forty-two percent of the possible target points we could earn. If you met all, if you exceeded all your targets and you had all fours here, you'd have a hundred percent. So that's why we're considering, uh, in terms of the overall accountability system, uh, that's why we're considered, uh, a district that's met moderate progress towards meeting our targets. Because we met forty-two percent of our targets. Uh, we want to meet more than forty-two percent of our targets, uh, but that, that's what that number comes from, what that means. Uh, so what's our big picture takeaways? Uh, we're identified as a district not requiring assistance or intervention with moderate progress towards meeting our targets. Um, certainly we need to, um, and I already said this, we need to move kids from partially meeting to meeting expectations. That's our basis. We have to get, we have to get those students out of that orange partially meeting. And we need to continue to focus on our performance indicators like chronic absenteeism, advanced coursework, graduation rate, dropout rate. I think those will improve. And we need to just improve our overall achievement scores. Uh, so that, that's, that is my presentation on accountability. And I'll take any questions people have about that. And that's kind of, that's more, that's a more muddled presentation of what it is.
I, I can't even imagine being the person that came up with that system. I, I, I can't, I can't believe we got a four for thirty, for that percent.
Yeah, well, because it's about improvement. It goes back to, the, the accountability system is all driven by improvement, which I understand. In the big picture, that makes sense. You want to have a accountability system that's based on, not solely based on what you're achieving, but are you improving?
Well, thank you for that very thorough presentation. Um, I think all of us look forward to hearing plans for.
Yeah. So we, we look forward to come back with our improvement plan, uh, in a future meeting.
Yeah. Does anyone else have anything to add? Okay. So we can move on to something.
Capital planning.
A little bit more positive. Capital planning, which is very exciting.
All right. So I will turn it over to Ron, who's going to kind of give an overview of our capital plan. If that's okay, Ron, and I'll sign in as appropriate.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, guys. So what I'm going to give you today is a brief overview on your ten-year capital plan. You have this document in front of you, so I won't read it to you. But I think I might just start by sort of jumping off from the presentations you recently had about MCAS and. But I think I might just start by sort of jumping off from the presentations you recently had about MCAS and accountability. The large focus of your capital plan is provide you with the stuff you need to improve with kids, right? And so you'll see over the presentation, I'll do a deep dive into the FY25 requests. So we'll go through each one of those in great detail. But you can see it's sort of laying out 10 years in all the buckets of capital requests. And for ease of reading, purely for ease of reading, there's no statute or regulation that requires it, kind of break these into three buckets. The first is your building, so facilities and equipment. The second is transportation. We own and operate our own transportation program. And the last is technology. So we'll touch upon each of those in their own buckets, do a deep dive into the individual fiscal year, and then certainly open it up to have any questions at all. Before we hop in, I'll mention two other things that I think are important to keep in the back of your mind. Everything that you see in front of you is driven by the educational blueprint for the Carver Public Schools. And I take a moment in every, every drill down for the fiscal year request to itemize what areas, what components of the blueprint each proposal really supports. So that you understand, is this about safe schools? Is this about supporting great teaching and learning? Is this about, you know, finding ways to leverage policy to get the most out of every dollar, like those sorts of things? So I'll make sure that I highlight those for you. The other thing to keep in the back of your mind is that this is a comprehensive capital plan, which means not just the funding that we would request through the town of Carver, but it also itemizes capital proposals and projects that we're working on that are externally funded. Carver Public Schools does a really good job at pursuing outside funds, grants and awards from the federal level, state level. And so you'll see some of these projects that are itemized for you. We'll go into some detail. But the total request is going to be zero dollars to the taxpayers here in Carver because they're ultimately offset by some grant that we have been able to write or been awarded in the past. So it's a comprehensive plan, not just the capital requests for FY25. Okay. Yep, and you've got the, the next page up there. Catch along, catch along on my screen as well. So what you're seeing in front of you here is the executive summary for your facilities and equipment. Again, it's a 10-year outlook that shows you FY25 to FY34. Full disclosure about a 10-year outlook with any plan. The short years, so 25, 26, 27, are gonna be reflective of the most accurate data on the ground. Your out years, FY32, 33, 34, are probably a lot more aspirational and more keen for change in the future. So I want to be transparent with you about that. The other thing, like, as we look at the executive summary that I want to bring your attention to is that the large majority of your facilities and equipment proposals, at least for the next several years, are really focused on the middle high school. It's the older of your two buildings. And the theme of our investments there are to sort of modernize the interior of the building to prolong the useful life of that facility. So to prolong the need to do a major renovation or build a new facility entirely. So you'll see a theme in a lot of the facilities proposals that focus in on modernization, modernizing different areas. Sort of high-value, low-cost investments. So I'll hop right into the FY25 proposals. And they're in no particular order, just the order they have in the grid there. Your first proposal at the middle high school is some HVAC renovations. And we're proposing a four-year project over at the middle high school. Again, as I mentioned earlier, Carver Middle High School, it's an aging building. And so this is one of a few projects that you're going to see over the next few years that sort of prolong the useful life of the building. The building has a lot of interior classrooms. And all of those interior classrooms, when the building was first built, had HVAC installed. The heating components of that HVAC system work, but a lot of the cooling components of those HVAC systems has sort of ceased to work or is marginally functional at this time, which is really challenging for kiddos and staff or in those classrooms at the bookends of your school year, right? So beginning of your school year, end of your school year, where it gets really warm, those classrooms get really warm, those classrooms get really humid. To do a full HVAC renovation, that building would be tremendously expensive, in the millions of dollars. And so the proposal here is a cost-efficient way to bring down the temperature in those classrooms and do in a way that's also leverages some federal funding. So over the next four years, we're proposing a $200,000 investment each year, with the first year FY25 ultimately being offset by ARPA funds. So we have a proposal in for ARPA funds that kicks this off for us. Again, as I mentioned, we try to find ways to offset the total cost to the taxpayers. I think ARPA will be a good way to, to get this project kicked off. Your next project, also middle high school. This is a continuation project of the past few years. We've called the middle high school classroom modernization and pathways planning. Again, you hear this theme of, you know, finding ways to enhance teaching and learning and, and maintain that building over time. So this project ultimately utilizes some funds to allow each individual department to update the infrastructure in their classrooms. So we keep the bones of the building, don't do any major renovations that are, you know, expensive. But we allow the classroom teachers and those department chairs at middle high school sort of move on from some of the old equipment, much of which is from the original building, and refresh it for a modern look, a modern feel, modern sort of equipment that kids are using for, for teaching and learning. Over the past couple of years, we've done English, special education and guidance. And if this would be approved, it would be the mathematics department that would be next for the classroom modernization plan. The next facilities and equipment proposal, maybe less exciting, but just as important, would be the middle high school parking lot. Again, you'll hear this theme, so I don't mean to be redundant, but I think it's important to just underscore. We took a look at some of the needs at middle high school. The parking lot is definitely in needs of repair. If we were to do a full parking lot, parking lot renovation, you'd be the better part of a million dollars to do that whole space. So we're trying to find a way to be more cost-effective. And what you see here is a multi-year prioritization plan, where we identify the areas of the parking lot that need our attention. We utilize a smaller set of funding, thirty-seven thousand for this particular year, to do those targeted repairs, patchwork, and then restriping as needed. Last year's funds were used to do just that, some targeted patchwork and some restriping. You'll see the student parking lot area has been fully rest stripped as well. This next project is a proposal to do a field revitalization over at Pond Street. You saw this last year as well, our phase one. And this would actually be a collaboration project between town, the school department, ultimately CPC. Last year, the town was kind enough to award just shy of a hundred thousand dollars for design work to revitalize that Pond Street field. And this proposal would ultimately go to CPC to do the construction of that field. Just to refresh your memory, I'll give you a 30-second summary, but certainly ask me more details if you'd like to. So prior to the renovation of your stadium area, Pond Street had a backfield. So you still have those two fields, but up on top of the hill, there's another field up there. Long story short, for a variety of reasons, that field ultimately needed to be used to yard some fill. When they scraped out all the fill, that's where the fill went to. That fill sat on that space while they did the renovation. Because the fill sits on that space, it damages all of the irrigation and it no longer has an even playing surface. The good news is that fill has since been used up, which is great. The bad news is you now need to have irrigation at a minimum and then also the field sort of resurfaced, regraded, so that kids can use it. The beauty of this project, though, is it's not just a school project. This is a project that the community can use. This is a project that the recreation department can use. Anybody in Carver can go and use this field, and I think it would give you some more capacity for your sporting programs across the, across the community. Emily and I from Recreation did this proposal with CPC last year. And our thinking would be that if this committee finds this as a priority project, we'd go forward with CPC again to propose using CPC funds, approximately $550,000 to revitalize that field and bring it back on board, back online. Side note, just as a point of clarification, if it was approved, we'd need a full year for the revitalization and then probably a year for that grass to set. Otherwise, your money would have not been well spent. You go, go on that field too quick, the grass is killed, you're gonna have to reseed it. So it does take a little bit of lead time, which is why we're trying to prioritize the project to get it moving for you.
Thank you for mentioning that. That's important for people to know.
The next project proposal, again, similar to that Pond Street proposal, the genesis of it really comes from the community's turf field project. So again, just to give you a little bit of context, back when the turf field was done, it's a beautiful space. But because of some financial constraints, they weren't able to add a concession stand, which most communities have in some capacity, some of them very small, some of them very large, expansive one. But what they were able to do is they roughed in space for a concession stand, which is great. And they're able to rough in the utilities up into the pad, essentially, of a rock pad at this point. So we have the infrastructure there for the concession stand. And the goal of this proposal is just to finish what was started back when that facility was ultimately built. We need to bring a concession stand to the Carver schools and the Carver community. Right, actually, my blue circle moved, so I apologize. But it's at the very bottom there. Sorry about that.
The concession stand is not gonna go on the, on the goal.
It'd be home field advantage right around the concession stand. But it's literally, it's right below that circle. Sorry about that. And if you've ever been to the, the field, you'll actually see this little section that has some crushed stone. That's where the, that's where the area's already been roughed in. It's ready to go for some kind of stand. This proposal, though, has a couple of changes from what we've had in previous years. So in order to build what we call a stick building there, it's gonna be expensive. And we had some pretty good success when we recently purchased a shed for the science department through some grants. Anyway, long story short, our proposal, we think, could help you save quite a bit of money if you move to something modular. It wouldn't quite be a shed like you have for the science department, obviously, because you'd have to have people in it more regularly than a shed. But a modular building would save you more than half of what was currently proposed. And again, so our goal here is to try to meet the needs that you have, which is a space to self concessions and have that community feel and do those sorts of things, but do in a way that's cost-effective. So next steps here, if the committee feels this is a priority, we'd want to meet with, you know, the recreation department team. We want the boosters, the athletic department, the folks who would ultimately use this concession stand to see if this vision matches what they're interested in. If so, bring on a designer to get a sense of what that looks like, and then put out an RFP for something modular, what that looks like TBD. The next facilities and equipment update would be the middle high school library. So again, in that vein of modernization, try to keep the bones of the building intact. Don't do any work on the major infrastructure, but do some updates to the stuff we use in that infrastructure. We think the library would be a priority. It's not only used by students in the classrooms regularly, but it's also used by community members for meeting space, for events, for those sorts of things. And so similar to what we do with our departments, in math and English and social studies and so on, we would prioritize the library as a space in need of modernization at the middle high school, which again, we think would be high-impact, low-cost for the community. The last facilities and equipment component of the capital plan is the only one that we have for the elementary school in FY25. And that's an elementary school play area. You can see that it's connected to a bunch of different components of the educational blueprint from, you know, supporting safe schools to engage in the community, to even enhancing teaching and learning. Because so many kids and community members use that space for play, for teaching and learning, et cetera. A little context for the project, give you your picture there, but the CES facilities out back have a variety of areas for kids to play, which is awesome. One of the areas is, what you see here, this little hill. It was originally intended, and Scott, correct me if my history is off on this, but it was originally intended by the engineers and architect to serve two purposes. One, it ultimately serves as the back hill to a swale, so runoff from the building pools in a swale and then drains out. And the second, it was supposed to be this sort of natural play hill. Well-intended, but as a play hill, it's a little challenging because we just have high volume. Seven-hundred-and-fifty students almost every day, plus kids after school and summer school and summer programs play on any one area, and your plants just aren't gonna grow, right? That's the reality of it. The team, the O and M team have been incredible. They have tried a variety of different avenues to try to keep grass on the hill, to try to avoid the erosion, to try to keep, those are stone stairs, safe for kiddos to be on. The long and short is, there's not really been a great solution to that hill. And so our proposal actually is to remove the berm itself in year one. We'd flatten that, grade that area back down, keeping in mind the swale area still. And then the second year, we'd simply continue the crushed wood chips that you see there in the picture already and add some swings, which are already in really high demand for students. So we think it would give that space a lot more utilization, remove some of the safety challenges and the aesthetic of the back of the elementary school. So that's facilities and equipment. I might pause for questions. Yeah, if you have any questions on those.
Facilities pieces, or thoughts, or?
I'm happy about the swings. I think kids will absolutely love that. I think it'll be a much better utilization of that space. I remember the swings of the old elementary school are always very popular.
Yeah, it's usually one of those popular pieces of playground equipment. And we have a couple already, but there's oftentimes a line at the swings, and this might be a space where the kiddos can spread out a little bit more. And they use, I don't have it in the picture, but they use that little area in the foreground that's cut off that currently has, you know, the wood chips, and we've got the canopies there and the picnic tables and those sorts of things. It's a high utilization area anyway for the elementary school. I think it would just give that space a lot more, expand the utilization of that space a lot more.
No, I think it's great. Thank you for all of the detail on each one of those items. I think they're all certainly worthy, and I think they'll do a lot to, you know, increase our engagement with the community and, and live in some of our spaces, like you said, in, in that building that we know is, is a long ways off from being replaced. So having been in the classrooms that have undergone the revitalization with the new furniture and the new layouts and new options, I think it's great. I'm not sure. If anyone else has anything they want to add, but I appreciated the way the funding has been spent so far.
I just have a question about the, the hill, if you know. Where does the runoff from the building, like, end up?
Couple of different places. That's just one of the swale areas. So right behind that hill, you'll see like some big crushed stone that goes into some smaller crushed stone. Century, the water goes there and then eventually percolates through the ground into whatever aquifers you have.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I've got two other sections for you in capital. The next is transportation, not nearly as exciting, but just as important. We've got to get kids to school physically. Your executive summary gives you a quick overview of our fleet. You can see that as well. And then, of course, the 10-year picture of what we do for transportation. I'll share with you maybe three items to take away from the executive summary. Certainly read it at your, at your leisure. The first is that we typically try to have a replacement cycle of 10 to 12 years for our vehicles. The reason is, you know, our mileage never gets to a point where our mileage is gonna be unsafe. We try to get it up over the thousand mark. It's just that we live in New England and more often than not, it's salt on the roads that does damage to the body, right? So a lot of more body replacement after 10 to 12 years. The second that I'll keep in the back of your mind is that we typically replace two to three vehicles a year so that we always are maintaining our fleet and we're never finding ourselves in a spot where we all of a sudden have to purchase four or five vehicles or that any of our vehicles are unsafe. And the last is just some kudos to our head mechanic and our assistant mechanic. We have two folks who maintain your entire fleet of over 30 vehicles. They do yeoman's work sort of quietly at our bus barn. But if you see our vehicles driving around, it's because our mechanics have taken the time to check them, make sure they're up to speed, make sure they have everything they need to keep our kiddos safe, to keep our drivers safe. So just kudos to them and their work behind the scenes on that.
Absolutely.
So just two proposals for you for FY25. The first is a 71-passenger bus, connection to your educational blueprint, simply supporting safe schools. I'll give you a little context to the rest of the detail here. You may or may not remember, last year, I put a lot of energy into some analysis of purchasing options between electric vehicles versus internal combustion vehicles. And that was tied into the federal infrastructure law that's got about $5 billion in funding to ultimately support school districts moving toward electric. The long and short is, we've applied in a couple of different ways, they had different tranches of funding. But Carver finds itself currently in between the two priority areas. So they, the feds prioritize very, very rural communities, and we're not quite rural enough. And they also prioritize urban communities, and we're not urban communities. So we're currently in the middle of their prioritization buckets. We'll keep pushing on it, but for now, the proposal for FY25 is good old-fashioned internal combustion. It's not diesel. It's gasoline, so it's a little bit better. But our goal will ultimately be to pilot some electric vehicles so long as the federal government covers the difference in cost. So we would still put up the same amount we normally do. The feds would cover the distance, the distance between the two. It would allow us to do a pilot ultimately on the fed's dollar. And the other is a wheelchair minivan. Two reasons we need the wheelchair minivan, so it's actually up in our rotation anyway. But we've also seen a pretty substantial uptick and increase in the number of kiddos who are severely disabled here in Carver, needing educational services outside of Carver. And so our routes have increased dramatically over the past couple of years. And this wheelchair minivan will allow those students to more easily access those routes. Ultimately, if we get back to. Ultimately, if we get back down to our more typical numbers, we would sell off one of our older vehicles and use this to replace the route. If we stay at higher numbers, we'd simply flip flop them. So the older vehicle does the very close routes and the nice newer vehicle goes out farther from Carver. Oh, one last thing, just as context to this, if these are ultimately approved by the school committee and then by town meeting. There is substantial lead time on vehicles still. It's not quite as bad as it was with the pandemic. We're right now, we're at twenty four months for a bus. We're now down to eighteen months lead time between when we execute the order and when it actually arrives to the manufacturer and about eight months lead time on the minivans. To give you some context to what's typical, usually it's like two to three months for a bus and minivans are on the lot. So there's still a pretty substantial lead time on these vehicles. We're working on, working with our manufacturers to get them in as soon as we can. But just a cautionary note in terms of the funding and between funding and when we actually get the equipment. Any questions on transportation bucket before I go to technology?
Anyone?
Nope. And lastly is technology. So technology is a big part of your capital plan simply because technology is a big part of education in twenty first century education. The large majority of our technology focuses on hardware, security and some combinations of software. Your first proposal is simply a firewall replacement. I'm going to give you, I guess I'll give you for all of these, I'm going to give you the layman's explanation. I can give you a little bit more detail after that. And then if you want more, I'm going to have Stephen come in and do more because he is the expert in these things. And he has been kind enough to educate me so I can pass some of what he's taught me along. So firewall, firewall essentially serves as your security apparatus for the internet. It filters out the bad actors who want to hack into your systems and get your students' data and your staff data and and and. And keeps all of our stuff from also leaving when it's not supposed to be leaving. Those have about an eight to ten year lifespan, depending on the way your system's been configured. Ours is coming close to the end of that life now. Our proposal would be to replace it in FY twenty five, both for the end of life, to get out ahead of end of life. But also to catch up with the capacity. So currently, our bandwidth, the amount of information that our district is able to carry across its servers was moved from one gigabyte per second to five gigabytes per second, which is five times more. How much more? All I know is it's five times more.
That's fairly robust.
Yeah, and I think it's, and from what Stephen describes me, it's robust because we have so many more applications that everybody is using. So apps and software and those sorts of things just use a lot more data, so we have to move a lot more data. Anyway, your firewall also has a limited amount of bandwidth it can handle. And the new firewall will have up to four gigabytes per second. So it gives you some capacity for the future as well. Your next proposal is a zero dollar requested proposal. Just as a reminder, we're going to continue to replace Chromebooks. We were awarded a federal grant back in twenty twenty two for about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we've utilized that over a three year period to be replacing Chromebooks for students. They use them everyday use in most of our classrooms at this point. We do expect that we'll have to get back on some kind of replacement cycle right after FY twenty five. So keep that in the back of your minds as we get off the federal funding and start to get to local funding or have to search for other means to fund it. And then you have two last technology proposals. One is at the elementary school. Over twenty, FY twenty three and twenty four, we dedicated our technology funding to replace staff laptops, which were coming to end of life. That rollout completed at the end of the summer, which is pretty successful. Kudos again to Steve Mahoney and his entire team for the work they do there behind the scenes. FY twenty five to twenty seven, we were proposed a reci, a placement cycle for our AV equipment. The AV equipment at the elementary school came with the building. It gets a lot more use in the upper grades. So our model here would be to do two grades a year over a three year cycle ultimately. Prioritizing those classrooms that have the higher usage. And then any equipment that we remove from the older students' classrooms that are either still functional or partially functional. Will either be used to support the younger grades, replacement or as parts if needed. We do that really just to maximize the dollars we have to use for technology in general. And our technology team does a nice job of trying to squeeze out the last bit of usage for any bit of equipment that we purchase. At the middle high school. Over the last several years, we used our technology capital funds to do AV work of the middle high school. That project has since completed, again, pretty successfully. Moving forward, our proposal would be to start replacing about fifty five desktop devices that are throughout the building. A bit of context for this project, so day to day use for most of our students and many of our staff as well can be used on sort of lower scale computers, Chromebooks, those sorts of things. But there are some applications that require just more processing power. Things like Photoshop, things like computer aided design, can't run on some of these basic pieces of equipment. And the equipment that we have in place currently, also coming to end of life. That is converging with a lot of these software companies increasing the capacity and capability of some of this high tech equipment, three D printing equipment, those sorts of things. And so all of their software runs at a higher level as well. So our proposal would be over the next couple of years to start cycling out some of the desktop equipment that runs a lot of this high end technology, art, design, software over at the middle high school. Again, relatively low cost for a high impact.
You're right, the two big spaces there would be the art room and the MET. We're getting new computers.
That was the whirlwind of technology as well. I just close off the document with an aggregate summary of your entire capital plan. You see FY twenty five along with the subtotal rollouts. And then you've got an aggregate total for capital improvement plan requests from FY twenty five out to FY thirty four. It knows a lot, but I'll answer any questions that you might have and happy to give you more detail on anything.
And just our proposal for tonight is not for the committee to vote the plan. So we wanted to make a presentation, get feedback. And there are still some things that could possibly shift. And the goal will be to bring the plan back at a future date, probably October twenty third, to have the school committee officially vote the plan. So tonight, we just wanted to present it and take questions and suggestions.
And I'll just add if I can, that we don't have a final number yet from the town that is how much is currently allocated for capital. And that typically drives some of our prioritization conversation. If there's a little more wiggle room, we can prioritize some of the, you know, more fun, exciting stuff that maybe aren't safety needs. And then if that number gets really tight, then we come back to the table with our team and sort of prioritize down.
Right, hopefully, hopefully, we will be prioritizing up and not down.
Right.
But thank you very much for all that information. I think it's extremely helpful for everyone to, you know, fully understand the impact that we can have in students and teachers every and all of our staff, you know, that their day to day experience in the district. So thank you very much for all of that information. Does anyone have any questions or anything to add? Okay, thank you, Ron.
Sure.
Very much.
I know I've been a little long this evening, so we do have the upcoming events. I'm just going to pull them up real quick. I won't spend a lot of time here. Besides saying that, in the month of October, we have a lot of field trips. And a lot of exciting things going on. So sixth grade is actually at Camp Burgess this week, so that's a new adventure. So made a bit, a little bit of a change from Camp Bonita to Camp Burgess. So they're currently there. And we have the band going out to UMass Band Day and the junior class going to Salem. This is a, so when you look at the things coming up, there's a lot of
There is a lot. It's a very busy month.
A lot of, a lot of field, a lot of field trips, a lot of goods, great student activities. We have homecoming coming up. We have homecoming spirit week, the Boost-a-thon starting. So Boost-a-thon is being kicked off tomorrow and the Fun Run is the thirteenth. So just a, a lot of things coming up. This is just in your background, so that you're aware of it. And just took you through Halloween. And we'll be back on twenty third with a, with a new list. So I'm not going to pick out any particular event. It's just there for the community to be aware of all these things coming up over the next month.
That's great. Thank you for that information. Okay, so that brings us to
Yep, coming back, kicking it back to Ron.
Financial update.
The next two, financial update and the disposition of equipment.
Yep.
I'll be brief, I promise. Start the financial update here. Yeah, so for your financial update, typically I give a little, you know, update on Washington and Beacon Hill, you know, finances for schools. I had a bunch on Washington, but it's since we currently have a budget, I'm simply saying no update at this time. More to come, I'm sure for that. Beacon Hill, I'll just give you a few seconds on this. You may or may not be aware, there's been a lot of conversation in Beacon Hill regarding some tax relief legislation. Haven't done, you know, tax relief in nearly two decades. It was part of the FY twenty four state budget. And there was some debate as to what the final scale would be and whether or not that would impact chapter seven, chapter seventy, local aid, et cetera. The long and short is they've landed on a number. It's not finalized yet. But in caucus, that number would not impact school aid, local aid, those sorts of things. I gave you some analyses there. Mass Budget and Policy Center does a summary. You can take a look at that. If you want to kind of do a deep dive on some white paper stuff like Max, Mass Taxpayer Foundation does the full analysis for you. But you take away, hold harmless, no issues, no impact on twenty four for the state level. Your next page has your FY twenty four first quarter warrants. Fiscal first quarter is come to a close. You see payroll and expenses to the penny there. And then you also have your FY twenty four grant awards. So I broke those into three buckets for you. The first is your federal appropriations. That's your ESSA money. Those are entitlement funds. They come every single year. Title one, two A for IDEA, early childhood itemized for you. And then you have some state appropriations that were competitive. And again, kudos to Dr. Eric, Dr. Erickson on this one. Mass Hire Connecting Activities for eight thousand dollars. Innovation Career Pathways Planning that Superintendent Neef alluded to earlier in our evening at twenty five thousand dollars. And then Dr. Erickson also allowed Carver to win an Innovation Pathway Implementation Grant for fifty thousand dollars. So a lot of that ultimately to support the work of innovation pathways here at Carver Middle High School. And no private appropriations at this time. So my request to the committee would simply be to approve the warrants and grants as awarded.
And there's no, no trans, no fights?
No transfers right now. We'll do one at the following game probably.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion?
Sure.
Sure. I move that we approve the financial report as presented this evening, including the acceptance of the warrant and federal and state grants the district has received.
I second.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, and again, this is a roll call vote. Kelly?
Kelly, Nene, aye.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be on to disposition of equipment.
So I have a brief memo for the committee per your policy regarding disposition of surplus equipment. Little context for it, any major piece of equipment that is ultimately determined to have no longer no longer have a value, educational value to the schools, it's put in front of the school committee for review. If that piece of equipment which recommended for surplus is voted as surplus. Then my office, the business office, will typically take a few different steps in there. First, if it's deemed surplus, we try to find someone else who wants to use it. We start locally and expand out from there. If ultimately no one wants to purchase it from us or have it donated to them, then we'll dispose of that equipment. The list of materials that you see here, the large majority are pieces of equipment that are currently in poor condition. Variety of mats and some gymnastics equipment that have been in storage for some time. We'll still make an attempt to try to sell and then donate. But if we can't do with either of those, then the equipment will be disposed of. The two buses, however, though, if you approve them as surplus, will be considered trade in. We have two buses that are about to be purchased, again, twenty four month lead time, so they're about to arrive. Upon their arrival, if you deem them surplus, I'll trade them in and get market value for those buses.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, there is also, if someone could please make a motion.
I move that the items identified this evening for disposition be deemed as surplus.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Again, it's a roll call vote. Kelly?
Kelly, Nene, aye.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Thank you again, Ron.
Thank you.
I have several field trips coming up that we're looking for school committee approval because they're either overnight or farther than seventy five miles away or out of state. So you can, you know, we can talk about them individually or you can approve them all as a group. So the grade seven and eight want to do a trip to Six Flags in October. Band is going to go to UMass Band Day in October. The seventh and eighth graders are also going to go to Kennedy Lake for Fright Fest in October. So a lot of those are coming up soon. And then the tenth and eleventh grader are actually looking to, the tenth grade class actually to add a new trip. They'd like to do a one night overnight trip to New York City in May of twenty twenty four. And that would be something that we haven't done in the past, but tenth grade advisors would like to do.
That's great. I'm glad to see that the sophomores are finally going to get a field trip. Personally, that was one of the concerns I heard from a lot of them at Civic's Day last year was that why does tenth grade not have a field trip? And I said, I don't know. You should try to change that.
And I think their thought process on this would be a little bit different. The eighth grade trip, the eighth grade trip goes to Midtown. This trip would go downtown, so they would go down to nine eleven Battery Park, Staten Island, Statue of Liberty. So that would be the areas of New York they're good looking to do. And I believe that's a, I shouldn't look now. I shouldn't. Is this Saturday, Sunday or Friday, Saturday?
It says the five seventeen to five eighteen, so it doesn't say the
It's one, it's one day overnight. So since I brought it up, I should answer my own question of what it is.
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
Excellent.
So be overnight, Friday and overnight.
Worry about getting back into school after arriving at, you know, two AM.
And like I said, we could, you can take them individually or you can take them as a group if you'd like.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? I'm all for bundling.
Alrighty, are we ready?
Yes.
I move to approve the seventh and eighth grade field trip to Six Flags, the high school band field trip to UMass, the seventh and eighth grade field trip to Kennedy Lake and the tenth and eleventh grade field trip to New York City.
I second.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Again, it's a roll call vote. Kelly?
Kelly, Nene, aye.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Have fun, everyone. Okay, so that brings us to reports from the school committee. I promise I will be brief, as brief as possible. So the first item that I have for your consideration is a resolution in support of the Thrive Act. And I know that Superintendent Neef did an in depth presentation about MCAS earlier this evening. God bless you. God bless you. This resolution mainly focuses on the graduation requirement portion of MCAS, which many other school committees across the Commonwealth have already signed on to other groups, as you heard from the APC, they're supporting it. So I wanted to bring it before the committee for consideration. I think this is something that is getting a lot of traction and that would be beneficial to students because I feel a lot of students are held back from accomplishing their goals. If they don't meet the graduation requirement by passing that tenth grade MCAS. So while I understand it's important to always, you know, self assess and make sure that students are meeting benchmarks and that they're learning what they need to learn to be successful in school and beyond. I also see this as a barrier. So I shared it in the background for everyone to review. Does anyone have any questions or anything they would like to discuss about it?
The other thing I would add is beyond the Thrive Act, there's also a, right now, there's a possibility of a ballot question.
Yes.
Which would not be in this year's ballot, it'd be in twenty twenty four in the November election. So the MTA has sponsored a ballot initiative that would do something very similar to the Thrive Act. So they're looking to approach this from two directions. One, through the legislature by passing the Thrive Act and/or doing it through a ballot initiative to be approved by the residents of Massachusetts in the, on the November ballot of twenty twenty four.
Yeah, there is also a resolution that I do believe two school districts worked on together that that will be presented to the delegate assembly at the MAS C and MAS S Annual Conference in November. So I'm not sure if anyone, if you want me to read the resolution, if anyone has any questions or a discussion. I mean, it's not very long. I'll just give it a quick read. Whereas access to a high-quality, publicly-funded education is guaranteed right written into the Massachusetts Constitution. And whereas the Massachusetts State Legislature is considering passage of H.495/ S.2.46 in Act Empowering Students and Schools to Thrive, also known as the Thrive Act. And whereas the Thrive Act would end the use of MCAS scores as a graduation requirement. And whereas the Thrive Act would establish a new process for identifying and supporting schools designated as in need of comprehensive support and improvement. And whereas using MCAS testing as a high school graduation requirement has prevented or delayed countless students from earning a diploma, either interrupting or derailing education or career plans. Whereas the Thrive Act would establish a modified graduation requirement based on coursework rather than high-stakes standardized testing and implement a new comprehensive support and improvement system designed to empower local communities to give students the tools and resources they need to succeed. And whereas the Thrive Act would establish a commission to study and make recommendations for a more authentic and accurate system for assessing students, schools, and school districts. Now for there be it resolved that the Carver School Committee supports the Thrive Act and urges the state legislature to pass the Thrive Act ending the use of MCAS tests as a graduation requirement and for purposes of placing school districts or individual schools into state receivership. So there is a proposed motion that's also in the background agenda if anyone is interested in making that or if anyone has any concerns or any adjustments or anything they'd like to discuss.
No, I'll make a motion. I'll move that we approve the resolution in support of the Thrive Act.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, again, a roll call vote. Kelly?
Kelly, Nene, aye.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so second is at the MAS C, MAS S Annual Conference in November, we need to appoint a voting delegate for the annual business meeting. So during that meeting, all of the resolutions that have been brought forth by different districts and groups across the state will be brought up for a vote, much like we just voted and passed this resolution. So they ask that every school district submit a delegate and an alternate to represent Carver at the annual business meeting on November 8th, 2023. So I was the delegate last year because I attended the conference. This year, I believe myself and Jackie are attending. I'm not sure if, I mean, I don't, I'm not aware of anyone else planning on attending this year. But anyone is, is more than welcome to, you know, express interest and desire to do that. It's perfectly fine. I think it's a great opportunity to listen to, you know, a lot of issues that districts are facing across the state. Also, they're reflected in what districts are, you know, facing across the country. It's good to hear other perspectives. You are able to make amendments on the floor. If there's something that you disagree with, you're able to get up and ask questions and really participate in the discussion and in the passion, the passing of the resolutions, which then MAS C will lobby the state legislature for in support of. And they've been fairly successful the last couple of years in influencing some legislation that comes out of the state. So I think it's a great opportunity for all school committees to participate in. So I would like to be the delegate. I'm not sure of Jackie if you're interested or if you'd like to be the alternate. There's just a form that we need to fill out and submit to MAS C by October 20th.
I'll be the alternate if it was just us two going. If no one else is going, I can be the alternate. Okay?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Total sense. Unfortunately, I can't go this year because I'll be at a company meeting by regular jobs, so I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we appoint Stephanie Clarity as the MAS C voting delegate and Jackie Lake as the MAS C voting alternate to the annual business meeting on November 8th, 2023.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, a roll call vote. Kelly?
Kelly, Nene, aye.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
We vote for ourselves? Jackie Lake, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Always good to check, but yes. Okay, so thank you. So then the third item I had on there was just something about the conference. I did provide a link so that you could go in and see if there were any sessions in particular in case you weren't able to attend for an entire day or the entire conference. I just encourage you to look at that and take a look and see if there's anything that you're interested in, that you could attend. And also, if there's something that you're interested in but cannot attend, if you could let me or Jackie know that we can try to get whatever materials the moderator hands out during that session, we can report that back to you. I haven't chosen all of my sessions yet, but I am looking forward to connecting with educators from across the Commonwealth. Every time I go to either an MAS C or an NSBA event, there's always commonality. And I always learn, you know, some new best practice or some, something that I typically bring back to Superintendent Neef and share with the school committees so we can, you know, continue to improve and, and grow. So there isn't a motion or anything required for that, so if you could just let me know if there's anything that you're interested, like I said, in attending, or if there's any of the dinners that you can go to, it would be great to have some Carver folks represent. So I know it's late. It's 9:20. This is our, I think, our longest school committee meeting in a while. It's not one of our 11 o'clockers, but I think it's been a very informative meeting. There's been a lot of good information. There's a lot of room for growth. And I personally will love seeing all those events on the calendar for our students and our community to enjoy. And I hope people will continue to come out and support our sports teams and support our students. So with that, does anyone have anything they would like to add?
Just thank you to Corinne for being, being here this evening and representing the Student Advisory Council. And we look forward to work with you over the course of the year.
Yeah, it was great to have, oh, sorry, it was great to have the group here as well.
It's great to be here, be a student voice in a space that I don't think a lot of students know a lot about. So hopefully I can help educate them in the same way that I'm helping to educate you about what's going on inside the building.
Thank you.
That would be great. Yeah, it was great to have Captain's Council back. I felt like we haven't had Captain's Council
In a while, yeah.
In a while. And we'll have student ambassadors next meeting.
Yep, elementary student ambassador coming to the next meeting.
Which is excellent, and I can't wait to hear how Camp Burgess went. I'm sure they're going to have lots of fun. All right, so with that, if any, if anyone has anything to add, please feel free. Or I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the October 2nd, 2023 school committee meeting as of 9:19 PM.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Again, roll call vote. Kelly?
Kelly, Nene, aye.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Thank you, everyone. Our meeting is now adjourned.
Go ahead, Kelly.